We created a bird feeder, if you remember, in December. And certainly my one here has been used consistently by a large number of birds. And I'm monitoring them for the Birdwatch Ireland survey. Hollies as well, that you have at this time of the year. You're throwing out the old hollies and the berries here. They might look a bit wrinkly to that, but just save them as we showed you in December and stratify them in sand or in a mixture of sand and peat-free compost. And put them in a pot. And you know, it'll be 18 months before you can actually see them germinating. But still, you're worth doing and you're contributing to biodiversity. Because holly is just one of those wonderful trees that does that. Hello, I'm Paddy Madden. You're welcome to the second component of the Kildare County Council's Healthy Ireland Initiative. We hope you enjoyed our December input on caring for birds in winter. Today, we will be covering chitting potatoes in January, growing garlic and broad beans, and onions and sweet peas as well. And also showing you how to make a light box and a clash for overwintering your vegetables. As you can see, nature seems to be asleep in the month of January. But there are signs of spring everywhere, from the daffodils and other bulbs emerging just above the ground. You see the catkins and hazels out there. And you yourself can stay active at this time of the year and you can eat well and you can be creative and you can enhance biodiversity by doing some simple activities. One of them is what I'm going to do now, chitting potatoes in January. Oh, January, it's a good month to start chitting new potatoes so that they can be harvested in June. These are first earlies and first earlies are the ones we harvest the first in June. So chitting them gives them a head start so that they can be planted around St Patrick's Day and then they're harvested about 80 days later. Make sure your seed potatoes are certified, which means they are free from diseases. So what do we do? We get empty egg cartons at this time of the year. And you place the seed potatoes in the carton with the side with the most buds upwards. These are the places where the new sprouts will grow from. It's called the rose end. Now, if we do it correctly, little short stubby growths will grow from these buds or these eyes. We place them in the carton like this, the rose end upwards, like that. And this one. And this one. And this one. So we have three cartons here. If the seed potatoes are exposed to too much light and heat, the sprouts will grow long and spindly and these will produce less potatoes and then they might break off when you're planting them. So a good idea is to leave them in a cool, frost-free place that gets light, but it's not too warm and it doesn't get too light. Something like a utility room in your house might be ideal. So these will be ready for planting around St Patrick's Day when they're about 2.5 centimetres high, about an inch in the old measurements. Now, you don't need a raised bed for planting them. Very good yields can be obtained from grow bags or even rubbish bags like this and waste bags like these ones. Simply, when the time comes around St Patrick's Day, roll down the bag like this. Put holes in the bottom for drainage. And it's a good idea to put greater stones there so that the water can get out. Cover this here, place about 15 centimetres of good peat-free compost in here, mixed with garden compost if you have it. And just like that, roll it down. And then what you do is you plant three potatoes in the bag. Now, remember, the medium is about 10 to 15 centimetres high. And you just stick the potatoes in, three of them evenly spaced like that around them and cover them up. And you can leave it outside, fine, just that if frost threatens, it's a good idea when they come up to cover them with fleece or with straw. Fleece looks like this. You can get it in the garden centre and it insulates the potatoes. Another way you can grow them is in a grow bag like this one. Again, you do the very same thing. You put stones in the bottom for drainage, build up the compost here to about 10 or 15 centimetres of your homemade compost and your peat-free compost mixed up together. Three potatoes, again, cover them up, again, leave them outside. And then we, as they grow, we will be showing you in our next videos, how to care for them as they grow. But the main thing is make sure to cover them with fleece if frost threatens, or straw or newspaper, so that they won't be burnt. Another thing you can do in late January or February is sowing broad beans. And these are hardy plants that can be grown in autumn or early spring. Broad beans such as aquadulcia, lardia or Sutton, sown in late January or February, they'll be ready for harvesting in late May and June. You sow them in five centimetres deep in a toilet roll tubes or kitchen roll tubes that have been cut in half. These are ideal for sowing them because broad beans have deep roots. To make the kitchen towel roll, very simple, into tubes, just cut it in into two halves like this and then you have two tubes. So when you put in the peat-free compost in here and then put it into a tray, there's no need to fold over the top or bottom or anything like that. Just put them in like that, pack them tightly together and then sow your broad beans in them. Just plant the beans five centimetres deep, which is about two inches. And cover them with compost. To protect them from the elements at this time of the year, place them in a tunnel, if you have one, or a cold frame or a clash until they're about five centimetres tall. This gets them off to a good start, keep them moist. And before planting the seedlings outdoors, gradually acclimatise them to outdoor conditions. Then the seedlings can be planted about 15 centimetres apart in raised beds or in window boxes. And we're going to show you next, how to make your own homemade clash if you don't have a tunnel or a glass house or a cold frame. Clashes are excellent for protecting plants during the winter. This is one I made earlier from an idea I read about in Jeff Hamilton's famous book, Gardener's World. All you have to do is get four pieces of wood. These pieces I have are 4.5 by 3.5 centimetres. Lats will do as well of any sort. These are for the base. The longer length is 100 centimetres long and the shorter one 50 centimetres long. Makes a rectangular structure as you see. So drill eight holes into the frame, holes opposite one another, into the frame with an eight-millimetre flat drill used for wood. Then you loop lengths of clothes hanger wire around into the holes to make a frame. Like this, so I have one, two, three, four, four lengths of wire. You can see them here, one, two, three, four. They are looped into the holes and then tied at the bottom. Clothes hangers are ideal for this or if you have other wire in your shed, they'll do the thing as well. So cover the frame then with clear plastic. And you can use paper clips or staples, which I've used in staples here, just to tie it down. Or maybe you could use tape, duct tape or sometimes or something like that. So this here now, I'm going to leave outside in a sheltered place. And I'll be putting my broad beans and onions and sweet peas in here to give them a good start. I have my clash. Can also be used outside, of course, on a balcony or small garden. We have a PowerPoint explaining how to make it.
You can make your own homemade clash. These are the requirements that you will need in order to make your clash. Making the frame first is very important. Fixing the wires and bending the wires into loops and inserting the ends into the holes. Finishing the job, staple the wires to the base. A good resource book is Gardener's World Practical Garden Course.
You're all familiar with garlics such as this garlic bulb, which you can buy in a supermarket. But you can grow your own at this time of the year. Now, normally garlic, it requires a long growing season. So normally people sow garlic from October to December. But you can plant it in January and also in February. These ones here are planted in late October. We have proof of that here. Organic garlic planted on the 23rd of the 10th, 2020. Now, they have established good root systems. So when the weather gets a little bit milder, I will plant them into beds or I could plant them into a window box shortly. So the variety we have today, it's called Marco, this one. And very simply, what you have to do is you just get the bulb here and you break it up, take off the loose material, papery material around it. Break the bulb up into cloves, which are, these are the cloves here, which you plant in the ground. Make sure to put the flat side here, throw them 10 centimetres apart into peat-free compost, to which has been added grit for good drainage. And the tips here should be about 2.5 centimetres below the surface of the compost. Leave outside in a sunny place and keep moist. And then later in the year, when the leaves start to die down, lift the bulbs and leave them on the surface to dry for a few days. And you will have loads of garlic for the rest of the year. So make sure that, again, just to clean this up here, two of the cloves here and just break them off like that. You can see. And we have one flat end and one pointy end. Discard any of them that are very small or soft because they won't amount to anything. Just pick good healthy bulbs, as you can see, good healthy cloves, as you can see from that one. I'm going to plant them 10 centimetres deep here in this, in this box. Just like that. Sorry, not 10 centimetres deep. I'm going to plant them so that about an inch below the surface of the soil, that's 2.5 centimetres. We plant them, the flat side down, 10 centimetres apart. So that's about 10 centimetres apart here like that. And just cover them up. And I plant another here and another here on a window box. Till I get, make sure again to plant the flat side down like that. So don't need raised bed for it or a huge big garden. Look, they'll be fine in this because that window box here has a good depth. It's about 20 centimetres deep, about 20 centimetres wide. And they do need that depth here for the roots because garlic produces quite a long root, as you can see. Enjoy planting your garlic this time of the year. Another thing you can do at this time of the year is plant onion sets. These ones here in the modular trays, they were planted last October and left in a tunnel. So you can see that they're making quite good progress. And I'll plant them out in March or April into a raised bed. Onions are biennials. That means that they take two years to mature from seed. Seed are sown in one year and the immature sets then, which you have here, these ones are small onions that are planted in year two. And when you're planting them, avoid any that are very, very small and skinny or that are soft because they will come to nothing. Just give them a little press like that and make sure they're nice and firm. Pull off any loose material around them like this. And of course, you plant them with the pointy end upwards. Sow them one centimetre deep, so they don't go down too far, as you can see. In modular trays like these, if you plant them too deeply, they will rot. This is a peat-free compost here that has been watered. So I'm going to just like that, plant them sitting in the compost, as you can see, just removing this. Sometimes birds pull them up like that. And that will make sure that they don't rot in the ground. Pull off any loose material that you see around them like that. That one is a bit soft, so I'm going to discard it. And this one, yeah, nice and firm. Leave them like that. Now, to protect them from the weather at this time of the year, you can put them in an unheated tunnel or a cold frame. But if you have neither of them, you can put them in a clash, as we showed you how to make one just previous to this. You'll plant them outside then in either window boxes or raised bed around mid-March or even early April after make sure to accustom them to the outdoors during the day for a couple of weeks, just to acclimatise them. So enjoy growing your onions at this time of the year. This time of the year, it's good to make certain items for your garden, which you can use in January, but also February and March. For example, it's very, very frustrating to see seedlings that are grown indoors and maybe a windowsill getting spindly and weak because they're getting an uneven amount of light. The result in plants then will be never strong and healthy. So a good way to prevent seedlings from becoming straggly and weak is to place the pots or your toilet roll planters, put them in a light box on a tray and fill them with the compost, of course, and put the seeds into them. They will get an even distribution of light as a result and they'll grow into sturdy and healthy plants. All you need is a box like that that I have here. And I just cut this diagonally. And then I got some breadstick, which I used for covering the bottom and the sides. And then I covered it with tin foil. And the light comes in the window then and reflects off the tin foil onto the seedlings, making sure that they grow nice and even and not long and spindly indoors. Just put some duct tape along here, just to keep the sides and this one has been used. The bits of the tape is bringing up. Now, we do have a video on making light box. So it's a nice creative exercise to do on a day when you're not gardening outdoors.
Seedlings in the classroom will grow towards the light and often become long and straggly. A light box will ensure even growth. Draw similar diagonal lines on both sides of a cardboard box. Cut along the diagonal lines with a craft knife. Remove the front and the offcuts. Stick the foil to the cardboard box using non-toxic glue. Place an old biscuit tin lid with seedlings at the bottom. Place the light box on a table facing towards the window.
Definitely one of my favourite plants anyway are sweet peas. And during the summertime, is there anything nicer than just to pass a place where they're growing as the scent of them wafts in the air or just to cut them and bring them inside and leave them in a vase indoors. Just a wonderful, wonderful plant. Remember though, that growing them with children, especially if you're growing ordnate peas, is just to be careful because sweet peas, believe it or not, are poisonous. And they do have pods like ordnate peas, so they might get them mixed up. So I do and I am careful about them with children, just to be aware of that. So they can be sown in January because this plant requires a long growing season. And what you do to start them off, I do anyway, I place the seeds in damp tissue, as you can see here. Like that, just roll over the tissue, put it into a Ziploc bag as such we have here. And then I put this into the hard press for a few days until the little white roots form. Then you sow them just about 1.5 centimetres deep into toilet roll tubes or kitchen towel roll tubes that have been cut in half. And these are filled with peat-free compost. They do have a long root, so those are ideal for planting them. You can place the tubes on a tray in your greenhouse or tunnel or cold frame or clash that we made already. You could start them off in a light box indoors just to get them going. Then later in the year, you can plant them outside, maybe under a wigwam, when the seedlings are about five centimetres tall. Pinch out the growing tips at the top to encourage the side shoots and you get much better peas. Enjoy growing a sweet peas in January. Now, when you're buying seeds, you can purchase open pollinated ones. You can buy these or hybrid seeds. If you buy the open pollinated seeds, you're making a bigger contribution to biodiversity because any of the plants from which these seeds come were pollinated by insects. Open pollinated plants have more flavour than hybrids. But hybrid seeds, on the other hand, of course, have derived from crossing two or more species and they're carefully chosen plants to produce the disease-free plants that are uniform in size and but they're, and which are desired by commercial producers. Seeds saved from them might not germinate and if they do, they will not produce plants the same as the parent plant. Seeds saved from open pollinated plants will produce plants similar to the parents. So if a grower had a particularly healthy plant, its seeds would produce a plant like it. These can then be shared. These can then be shared with other growers. Plants that have been growing successfully for years in certain localities and the seeds of them are handed down from generation to generation, they're called heirloom varieties and they contribute to plant biodiversity. It is important for food security, of course, not to have a small number of companies, very small number, responsible for producing and distributing all the vegetable seeds. On our website, www-engagewithnature.ie, we have a list of Irish companies that produce open pollinated seed. So Desmerta and I hope you enjoyed the January component of Kildare County Council's Healthy Ireland Initiative, which we are working for. In February, we are, hope you join us again when we will be sowing the seeds of half-hardy plants that are important for pollinators. We'll also be sowing meteor and felt and first peas. These are very hardy ones. We'll be sowing them in gutter pipes and we'll be erecting, I'm showing you how to erect a house for solitary bees and contribute to biodiversity. So continue to eat well, stay active, mind your physical, mental health and continue to contribute to biodiversity. Thank you.